Okay, let's rise from the rich to the black.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our commissioner and council workshop session. I hope that we don't get interrupted with a weather problem before the meeting gets over. We'll see. So first thing on the agenda, minutes of our last meeting. Any questions, discussion on that? Vote for approval.
Second.
We've moved in second, we approved the minutes. Any discussion further? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. At our last, our meeting two weeks ago, we acted on a invoice from voter office. And that was the wrong amount. The bill was actually from last year was thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And we agreed to pay the amount that needs to be paid out of our contingency line item. So if we could have a motion to approve to pay that from the contingency fund, that would be good. This is a bill from last year that we don't know why, but was not submitted for paying. It was brought forth to the clerk recently. She has forwarded it on to us. That money, since it was not spent last year, reverted to the general fund. So paying it out of the contingency fund, our line item, basically is a washout.
What was it looking like?
It's H A R T.
Thanks Eric Bolling machines. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. On to items on our agenda. Judy Porter from Small Business Development Center.
I have some things for everybody that I would like to pass out. I think I'll do this. I'll send those that way. Is this that way? Actually, can I have one of those? Before we take off with it? Thank you. I'm gonna probably need one of those too.
Thank you sir.
One of my own papers. Thank you. All right, well, thank you, everybody, and good evening. And I hope we do hold off on this after the weather. My son called me for Mindy, and it was pretty bad over there. And then my husband said it was bad in Newcastle. So hopefully, we don't get hit too hard over here. But anyway, my name's Judy Porter. I'm the regional director for the East Central Indiana Small Business Development Center. We are an organization that there are S V D Cs across the country. There are ten regional offices in the state of Indiana. And for our region, East Central, we have eleven counties, which include Blackford, Delaware, Fayette, Grant, Henry, Gay, Madison, Randolph, Rush, Union, and Wayne. We are a grant-funded organization funded by the Small Business Administration at the federal level, and then also by the state from the I E D C. And then local communities such as yourselves. Eight of our eleven communities contribute in some way, either at the county level, the city level, or economic development. Just it's kind of a mixture of that. And then we're also hosted by Ball State University. They take in all of our grant money from all those sources and facilitate that. And then they also kick in a portion of that money and handle the grants. So we're technically Ball State employees, but we, I have two bosses, Ball State's side and then the state side. And then I guess if you want to count the federal government.
We count us too?
And you guys, yes, all of the people that contribute. So we have several bosses and people that we answer to. And that's good, because that keeps us accountable. So anyway, each year I come here. Well, last year was my first year. My predecessor, Peggy Sanova, probably most of you know her, because she's a legend in Wayne County. So I replaced her. There was one director in between us. So last year was my first year here, and I actually think the first time that I requested money, and I was terrified. So I'm back again, just to let you know what we do, and to request fifteen thousand dollars for continuing the support for our community. And just, I don't know if everybody's a hundred percent sure with what we do, but we do no-cost business advising. We have an advisor that we have specifically come for Wayne County. We help, or we do workshops. We've started some new collaborations with Earlham and I U East, which I'll touch on here again in a minute. But if somebody gets with one of our business advisors, they can get information about business planning, or financial projections, marketing, industry research, how to structure your business, and then we can connect them with a variety of resources too. If we don't have the answers, we can steer them to the answers. And all of that is no cost, because again, it's paid for by all the dollars that everybody contributes. Some of the workshops that we do, we do guide to starting your business workshops throughout the region periodically. Business planning, we have QuickBooks that we offer that we can, we offer this for free. It's usually a two-day workshop, and we try to rotate that around the community and last, our communities. And last year, which I believe it's in that information I gave you, we had it in October here in Wayne County. Again, we've done it over here a couple of times, but I tried to spread that love out around all of our communities. And then last year, we were a little slow to get this going. We hired two new positions, one's an ecosystem navigator, and then a program specialist. And the program specialist, I hired her to handle all things programming. And then she does some other side tasks for me too. But she handles, she listens to the community, sees what people want to bring in, facilitates that for all of our eleven counties. And then our navigator, she is more of a, I hate to use the word socializer, but she is a socializer and networker. And she is also there to, if we don't have somebody who wants to take a deep dive into business advising for specific, you know, like business planning or whatever, she's there for the more one-off questions and connecting resources throughout the state. So we have her on our team, and she actually will be starting some office hours over here. She's systematically been getting into each community she just started in February. And so her plan this summer was to start doing, excuse me, specific office hours in Wayne County, starting mid-July. And we were waiting for some other things to come up, be set in place with our partnership we're doing with Earlham for the downtown revitalization enrichment. So we're waiting for that person to get in place. So we have all those things going on, but I gave that packet I gave you, just gave some highlights of 2024 with our metrics, just specific to Wayne County. We assisted with helping somebody, or five people start businesses. We served forty-four clients in Wayne County. We had six capital transactions, which that means they could have gotten a bank loan, they could have gotten a grant, they could have gotten owner investment, any, anything that they've put into their business. There were six separate transactions for people that counted. And those six transactions resulted in just a little over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Of the forty-four clients we served, eight of those were long-term clients. And that long-term to us means somebody that, a unique client that we've met with five hours or more. So eight, eight of those people saw our services for at least five hours plus. And then job supported two hundred and sixty-six. So those are the highlights of what we've done here. And then we had some, as mentioned, the QuickBooks. We did that in October first and second at the library here. And then we had the other two workshops that we had. We actually had another one, I looked up, we had scheduled. And then it was on the, the new guidelines, when everybody thought the payroll things were changing with thresholds of pay. And since that didn't happen, we ended up not needing that, and we canceled it. But we did have that on the books for December, and it was canceled. I didn't put that on here, because I didn't feel like that counted, but we did plan it. And then we had two virtual workshops that are available to anybody in our region, or actually anybody in the state that wanted to take them. And then on that last page, some highlights that we've got going on that I'm excited about. We have a new partnership with I U East. I don't know if you heard about that. But mid-August, we actually have an office space over there, and we have an advisor that comes here almost every Wednesday to meet with clients and those who are in the old office hours. If he needs to come over another additional day, he can. We also have been, our advisors have been, and our program person have been doing some collaboration with Tim Scales, with his students, and going and teaching classes, or not teaching them, but collaborating with the students, I guess. But we've actually gotten a few students that have become clients, so that's kind of exciting, just seeing that ramp up from our presence there. Doing something similar with Earlham, except for we don't have office hours there, and there wasn't any pomp and circumstance about us being there. But we're doing a lot of work with Jean Hamrick as well. Same thing, our program specialist and our advisor go in and do some work with them, with our students. So we're excited about that. And then I'm also, we're part of that downtown Richmond partnership. I was on the search committee for who that person was going to be that they hired. I don't know if they've announced it yet, so I'm not going to say anything, but the partnership we're going to have, we, that we're actually going to, they're going to end-kind us some hours, so that person that they're bringing will be doing some direct work with us. So that's kind of cool. So stay tuned on that, because I think it's going to be a great thing. But in conclusion, those are just some quick down, down and dirty stats of what we've been up to and what we've got coming up. And you know, like I said, we're requesting fifteen, or our continued support, I believe over the last several years, given fifteen thousand dollars to our cause, and I'd appreciate that if we could continue that this year. Anybody have any question?
Is that, you're asking for that for this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year, yeah.
It's, it's actually in the consolidated added budget.
Yes, I hope so.
I have a question. Do you ever get asked for help by a nonprofit, like with some of the bookkeeping and how you do, especially QuickBooks? Do you ever get asked for help?
We do get asked for help for nonprofits, and we don't really specialize in that. But we have, some of our QuickBooks workshops, we have allowed nonprofits to come. Now, I will say, without getting too complicated, there, some of the, we have the same trainer for those QuickBooks workshops. And then I have some money set aside in my budget that I can bring her to town. But then the state also has another sidebar contract with her. And the ones that we advertise for that sidebar contract, nonprofits aren't allowed to come. But if it was mine, then they could come. But we also have, we have a couple of referral sources that we, we send to people to for nonprofits, depending on what county they're in. So, but not specifically. We could work with a really, really, really small percentage of nonprofits, but just to be on the safe side, no, we don't.
I appreciate that, and I'm just asking for the people watching, in case they needed help with some of that.
Yeah.
Just for businesses, or can they, as a nonprofit, ask? And so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Been contacting the board and working with your organization. I well remember when you set this up, back in the eighties and nineties.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
So that's a good memory.
And I actually was employed by S V D C.
Oh, you were?
Awesome, when it was under the chamber here.
Okay.
It's a good organization. We do a lot of, we do a lot of good work, so.
Thank you very much for coming in, Judy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, it's not going to happen this evening, maybe in the future at the safety village, so we'll skip past that. Mary, we want to talk about the job posting request from Judge Moore.
We have three requests to post, two pending from Personnel Committee that we talked about, then an additional one that came forward. So the first request to hire that we bended was the one presented by the sheriff for the civil process clerk. That's a full-time position that the individuals provided adequate notice to the sheriff that they'll be leaving employment. His request is to replace that position, which is needed to process the civil process paperwork for. So I would entertain a motion to approve the posting of that civil process technical clerk.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Not? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The second one, if you recall from Personnel, we approved the posting of a truck driver position at County Highway. That was approved at Personnel. Mike has been notified that he's losing another truck driver, and he would like to post the second position as this application process is open for interview and consideration. As a reminder, this is paid for out of, not out of general fund dollars. These are M V H dollars. With this, I would entertain a motion for approval for posting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Not? All those, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The legal assistant scheduling clerk was the request that we heard from Judge Moore at Personnel. To recall, council created three positions in the twenty-four budget, carried those into twenty-five, and the courts have not hired the, any employees for those positions. However, Judge Moore had asked after the election in November that we allow him time to do an evaluation in his court as the new judge. He came to us with a request to hire or to post this additional position. As part of our due diligence, I did follow up with Corey, and I made contact with Judge Horn and Judge Drake in regards to the sharing of this employee. Judge Horn through email supports the concept of sharing a single employee as a new employee in the courts. And when I spoke to Judge Drake, she stressed the importance of that was if they have an employee currently that is either sick or on vacation, and they're having a trial, they have to close the court office, which prevents any other attorneys or anyone from conducting business in the court. And it's her belief, and Judge Horn's belief, that the court should remain assessable to anyone that's not involved in the trial. This has been in the budget for two years, and would be a new position created. So their request is that we approve this additional posting, and they have no intention of asking for the second or third position. So this one received quite a bit of discussion. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer those.
Judge Moore is here.
Oh, is he? I did not see him. I apologize, Judge. You're sucking on me.
So.
It'd been easier for me to just say, well, the judge is here.
You were, you were doing a great job.
Mary, so I have two questions. I know there's been some conversation, and it's not up to vote, but as we discussed, the budget of expanding hours at the courthouse for the court employees, right? I mean, that's, we see it coming.
That's correct. That's part of, that's part of our next budget request, is that, that our employees go from thirty-seven and a half hours to forty hours. So that's also in recognition of the workload, as well as the caseloads that we're dealing with. So it's also perhaps even better a reflection of the amount of work that's already being performed by our staffs. So it's, it's less an increase than it is a reflection of actual work.
Sure. So I, I requested what that dollar amount would be, and Mary, with the help of the auditor's office, gave us that number, not including the position that you're asking for. If, if we're going to talk and discuss the additional hours, that comes out to a hundred thousand, is that right, Mary?
Yes.
In addition. So then this employee.
That would be a change also from the overtime request. Am I correct that that portion would be not necessarily reduced, but it's a reflection of the amount that's removed from there, or from comp time in order to adjust those figures?
That would be the hope. That would be the hope. That doesn't always happen, right? So.
It's possible.
So Mike, yeah, so my question, knowing where we are with all of our decision-making, all the financing of things, I don't think this, this request that's being made by your, by you is just one individual request. I think it could compile to these other requests that we're going to have in the budget season. So I see it as more of, either we need to wait and have the discussion total of what it impacts for the entire budget. So either do the wait and include that for our budget discussions. But I guess from my perspective publicly, I feel like we need to be aware, it's not just one ask, that there's going to be additional asks, that it's going to be more than just the sixty thousand dollars for this added employee. It's just my thought. It's okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it's, it's sixty thousand, but I think that's on an hourly rate, forty hour, forty, forty hours per week. I'm not sure that that's the right number.
I think that includes benefits. Yeah, it's everything. It's not just, which impacts the budget at the bottom line.
Yeah, so those calculations, that spreadsheet we shared with you this afternoon, as to what that would look like.
And the expense of the benefits would depend upon the needs of the health insurance that that employee would have.
So it's going to be more or less.
Yes.
So in respect to the judge's time and being here again tonight, even though I didn't see you come in, if there's anything you'd like to add beyond what you shared with us at Personnel?
Sure. Ultimately, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that the twenty-four budget, and well, even historically, the courts have, I think you've recognized that the courts have requested additional employees. Sometimes it has been for a court administrator. I think that was approved some period of time, and then ultimately, an additional person was approved for each court. With the, with respect to the needs of the court, I don't know that anyone disputes that. The real issue is logistically whether or not Superior Court Two could, could even host another person. Circuit Court, I believe, does have the ability. Again, I don't speak for the other judges, but I think you and your contact with Judge Horn and Judge Drake, independently of, of me, I think confirmed the need that, that we have, particularly when it relates to other employees being off, other employees being out for whatever those needs might be, for F M L A or otherwise. Our courts shut down if that, if that happens. So the assistance of a fourth person wouldn't just merely be as it relates to workload and caseload, but also just to help deal with those other courts overflow. So the, the person would be trained by me, employed by me, but would be used throughout all three court systems.
Well, I would personally like to see the job description changed to state that that person will be used in all three, because right now, our job description doesn't say that.
I did talk to Kim about that today, and H R can add that language, that it would be a faulty word, floating position. That way, the employee was aware of what the responsibilities are. That does not change the classification or any necessity for review.
I would agree.
It just happened, right?
And these have been in the budget, correct? Before I came to the council? These have been in the budget, approved in the operating budget for the last two years, or?
Yes, twenty-four and twenty-five.
With the cuts that we need to make for next year, I see this one, because it's already in our budget, as more important than adding extra money for next year, so.
And the other two? And our, probably at our budget workshop, you'll note that, that we have, have met the request of, of the county to reduce our budget size. So I believe that even with the addition of this person, that we would fit within, within the needs of the other county. So I'm asking you all to approve it tonight.
And with that, to move towards discussion, is there a, I'll entertain a motion for approval of posting the legal assistant scheduling clerk. Do I have a motion?
I would move that we do that, subject to the job description being altered to reference the sharing of that position with this other courts.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to approve the amending of the job description and posting of the legal assistant scheduling clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Judge H R will make that change. They're going to send that back to you and Corey for your approval, and then that'll be posted.
Thank you very much.
Is that to take care of Personnel matters?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Health Department is going to request an appointment from council to be a member of the board. Dr. Ryder, glad to see you.
Jeff Butler, who's served on the board for eleven years, and has done a very nice job, but is a retired hospital administrator, has moved out of county, which disqualifies him from being on the board. His term is actually up at the end of this year. And so the board reviewed possible people that'd be new board members, and came up with two people that we'd recommend for consideration. One is Roger Smith, who I assume most of you probably know, who is certainly on the council, was a hospital, was a school administrator, and certainly has had a lot of experience in budgeting, and also, it looks like you'd read his resume in technology. So we thought he would certainly add some strength to the board. The other person is Brandon Guth, who's a P A at Reed, and also been a P A at WellCare. But he is specializing both in hepatitis C treatment, as well as runs a, a medication-assisted treatment program for opioid use disorder, both of which problems our county is really facing. And so we felt that he would also bring some strength, particularly in that area, to the board. I mean, they're both very good candidates. I think if you pick one, I think the next opening that comes up will probably come with the other.
Dr. Ryder, what was the last name of Brandon?
Brandon Guth, G U T H.
G U T H.
And is there another opening in, in January? I think the, the other opening, no, it's actually, yes, would be Emily Schaefer, who you just appointed to the board.
Just appointed.
My guess is that that will, that she will probably, has to be reconsidered, and that would probably be our recommendation at that time. But every year, there'll be more, and some of us getting older, so there will be a point. But some may ask not to be reappointed.
You, you have one candidate that's got a lot of business experience as far as budgeting and stuff like that. The other was medical experience. Which one do you feel would benefit you the most? I guess I'm putting you on the spot.
You know, I'd do it as almost equal. I mean, they're both, both problems, as we're going through, you know, having to look at our budgets being cut and everything. I think that's important to have someone with skills in, in that area. On the other hand, the other health problems are big problems for our community. I mean, it'd be nice, we could appoint both of them, but this is one where I think you have to decide, I guess for us, which, which one we'd want.
As far as a board member goes, I would say that the budget experience would be much more important than.
I agree.
Medical, because they have medical people on staff in the health department that already handle those kind of things.
And several of the other board members are medically.
Yeah, and I would lean towards the.
Mr. Smith has extreme budget experience, and I agree with you on that, because of what we're going to be looking at, I feel Roger would be very beneficial to their board. And if they do end up having another opening, like Dr. stated, they still have another applicant that could be considered for that.
Yes? If I may, because I'm liaison to the health board, I did talk to Dr. Bales after the last meeting, and in talking to her, I'm leaning the other way, towards Brandon Guth, because of the medical things and all the issues that we have, we just did away with this.
Because of the medical things and all the issues that we have, we just did away with the syringe program. And maybe having somebody else, I mean, we have medical people on the board, but I think they're both retired. This guy is still working and, you know, I just think, and it's no offense to Roger, and like you said, if somebody else comes along shortly then, or leaves, that would be great. But for me, I think the medical thing would be, and again, you know, having talked to her, my impression from her, not that she said either way, but gathering just the information and listening to the health board and all the things going on, I would myself lean the other way. But that's just me.
I think one of the things is that he's running an MAT program, which is really kind of the gold standard for long-term treatment of people with opioid use disorder. And so that's something that is valuable to the community and a problem that we're really facing big time. So.
Are you looking for a motion?
They both bring strengths, but they're different.
They are good candidates. I agree, but I'm all right.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I kind of lean towards budgetary experience with the health board. Because I do have doctors and all that on staff. Kind of have to lean that way.
Do we have a motion then to?
I'll make a motion. Do we recommend Roger Smith?
I'll second that.
Actually, we appoint him.
Appointing, excuse me.
No. I think you're recommending to the commissioners.
Oh, really? I thought this was an appointment of the council.
Correct, Ron. It's an appointment of the council.
I thought that was an appointment by the council. I thought we went through this before, that they make the recommendations of commissioners.
The mayor and the council make recommendations, but I I thought that's what you said before. I apologize.
I have substance in that.
I have to.
I have a feeling we'll go with whatever you guys recommend.
Dan, do you have any input on this?
How about making it recommend and/or appoint?
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
One way or another, we'll get to this.
Make the motion. We recommend the work point, Roger Smith.
Do we have a second to Jeff's motion?
I second that.
Any other discussion at this point? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Or nay, whichever. Whatever it is.
Motion passes. We are either recommending or appointing Roger Smith to the
If we would assume that it's a recommendation, well, we go ahead and
I'll make the motion to appoint Roger Smith to the health board. Second.
We have a motion and a second, that if we have the authority to appoint someone.
I think he's definitely going to get appointed.
He can't get off on it now.
That the recommendation is Roger Smith. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Did you vote again?
I did.
Sorry, Miss Kev. I've done that before.
Oh, dear.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Dan, do you have anything else from the health department that we need to be made aware of? Thank you. Brandon. Want to talk about funding, things related to the G Street Bridge, getting that finished up?
Yes. Good evening. I just wanted to touch base real quick with our G Street Bridge project. Coming down to a close on that one, one of the remaining items is to install the safety fence, which they are currently doing that. I know last year we talked a lot about the additional patchwork that was required, thus prompting some additional funding for this project. Just to recap on the construction inspection costs, that contract was $393,000. You guys should have a handout with these numbers as well. The end dot match for that contract was $230,000. So that left Wayne County being responsible for $163,000 of that amount. At the end of last year, the inspection contract, we only spent $52,000. And I'm rounding for that. In this month, we have spent $156,000 of that contract. So that leaves about a little over $7,000 left in the construction inspection contract. Currently, we have a negative balance of $6,500, partly due to the contract amount not being spent last year. So hindsight, we probably should have uncovered some of that in this year to fully cover the cost. So the additional patchwork, looking at that, I've got my number today. It's a very good estimate on that, $215,000. End dot was gracious enough to offer to pay 80% of that. So that does leave the county responsibility of $43,000 on the additional patchwork. So what I'd like to do tonight is I'm coming for you to request an additional appropriation of $75,000 to cover the additional patchwork, the remaining construction contract, and to bring the account back up. I know those numbers are about $53,000-ish, just having a little bit of a buffer on our design side of the contract. In those contracts, there's a construction phase services, which our designer will review shop drawings or if there's questions on the plans. So there's a little bit of that leftover. I don't foresee us using that, but just having a little bit of a buffer. That's why I'm asking for just a little bit more.
This is from the bridge fund, correct?
This is from the bridge fund, correct, yes.
So it's appropriation will need to advertise.
Correct.
Can that be advertised and ready to act on at our July meeting or not? Have to be the workshop in July?
Yes.
Is that timeline satisfactory with what you got coming up?
Yes, we have not received the official change order from End Dot yet for the additional patchwork. That's probably going to be another month or two out, so we do have plenty of time here. Not under the gun or anything.
So we need to get that advertised, and we'll act on that at the July workshop on the 16th. Is there additional, any questions, comments for Brandon?
What is the current balance of the bridge fund right now?
Don't have those in front of me right now.
I think it's $3 million something.
Yeah. The report that was just sent out is $3,489,247.66. But a lot of that money is allocated out for a lot of things. But that's the cash balance there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Brandon? Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing you on the 16th.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Follow our full day of discussions on the budgets.
Thank you. Thanks, Brandon.
Okay, moving on to a different subject here. As I mentioned, we're having our all-day session to discuss budgets with each office and department on the 16th. We have two individuals that are not available on the 16th, so they are going to present their budget request to us this evening. Matthew Kane, would you please present your budget request tonight?
Absolutely. Thank you for letting me come this evening as opposed to the 16th. Council members should have a handout in front of you on just going to highlight what is in that letter that explains the changes, requests. And then you have the actual budgets themselves attached to that with the highlighted corresponding line items. So, and those numbers do match what's in Lau. So no concern there. So I will first start with the 1222 fund, which is what we call the 911 fund. Only going to highlight the changes. Everything else, if I don't mention it, is assumed to be the same and unchanged. The first change is line item, the 33200, professional services and contractual. I'm actually requesting that line item to go down, to decrease it $12,000 to $8,100. We had increased that for this year with anticipation of needing to pay some consulting fees, and we ended up not having to do that. So therefore, we can decrease that particular line item for next year as we see no need or no anticipated cost to come out of that line item. The next one, 33240, is what we have titled communications. I'm requesting a decrease of $18,000 in that line item. Don't get too excited because the next one's where the increase is coming. But this is, we are replacing our current 911 software. The maintenance contract that we currently pay comes out of this line item, and we will not need to pay that for next year to this particular company. Moving forward, I would like to pay that service contract, a maintenance agreement, out of the next line item, which is 33670, which is titled the service contract. So I'm kind of moving where we pay that maintenance out of. Our maintenance agreement will go up for our new 911 call-taking software, as everything else is when you buy something new. And so I'm requesting an increase in that line item of $51,000. And those are the only three changes requested in the 1222 or 911 fund. It's a net increase of $21,000. Any questions particularly about that fund? Again, the letter you have goes into greater detail. You can reference it moving forward as you discuss the budget this summer. And as always, you're welcome to reach out to me as well for clarification. The next fund is 0301, the general fund. I do have a couple costly increases, but these should not come as a surprise for those that have been on council, because both of these are related to our radio infrastructure project that we knew were going to be costs of this. So the first line item is 33200, which is contractual out of the general fund. I requested $127,000, and that is an increase of $72,000. If you'll remember right, this is to pay for the lease agreement for our equipment to go on to the two new towers. And those towers, to put our equipment on to them, is $8,350 a month. Now, the goal is, and what we anticipate, is that will decrease over time as other people join and get on the tower and utilize the tower. Then our payments go down. That's part of that agreement with the owner of the tower. So, but unfortunately, jumping right into it, being the first tenant, if you will, on the tower, we are need to budget for paying the full amount. So I had asked for an increase in the 2025 budget to cover the last few months because we knew we would have to start paying that lease payment. And you did graciously give me that increase last year. So the $72,000 ask for next year takes into account of what you've already put in this year to get roughly $100,000 a year is what we'll need to budget for that equipment on the tower. Any questions specifically about that? The next one is line item 33510, utilities. We haven't needed to worry about utilities because Steve or someone else's department pays the light bill for us, and we're just paying for some minimal things. However, with these tower sites and our equipment at the tower sites, we're going to have utility bills now unless Steve wants to pay them. But it's going to have to come from somewhere. So each of those shacks at the towers are HVAC-controlled, heating and cooling, plus the electricity to run all the equipment, surge protectors and all that kind of thing. So I have absolutely no idea how much to budget for. And so I put in a $500 increase, which is miniscule probably.
And I don't want to bust your bubble, but just for transparency purposes here, that $700 you're probably going to have to ask for an additional appropriation sometime in the year.
Absolutely.
Because of the fiber connection for the back hall and the wireless redundancy. There will probably be some charge to that, but as you said, we have no idea what that's going to be. But just so you know, that 700 may not be enough.
I'm fully aware of that. I just needed a reason to highlight that line item for y'all, so that's because I will be coming back this time next year, probably when we have a better idea.
We have received the first lease payment from the tower company for the Lianta County Highway. That check was received last week.
Yes.
They've already started making the payments.
$500 a month, so $6,000 for the year, but can offset a little bit of this increased cost.
So the lease payment per month, that's for two towers?
Yes, the $8,350 is for two towers.
Yes, sir.
And then I have no other requests for the general fund. I know in your letter to department heads, it was for us to try to decrease our budgets. And I realize I'm coming before you not doing that. My way of trying to contribute, though, is I have five or six maintenance agreements with various vendors that they tell me to put in a 5% increase every year because those maintenance agreements do go up about 5% to 10% every year. And instead, we sat down collectively as a department, and we're going to absorb those costs ourselves and try to find some money in other places. So that's my, you know, contribution, understanding that it's not great, but it's better than nothing maybe. So the only other thing, the third budget is the SARA fund that we have, and there's virtually no changes there. It's kind of its own animal, if you will. And the money we get from the state comes in the fall, and then we come before you for appropriations at that time. So there's no real changes to that budget at all. The last thing I will mention is on the general budget. I did put a $4,000 capital expense request on there, simply, again, kind of as a reminder. I had put that on there last year as well, if you'll remember right. It's the amount of $75,000 for new recorder equipment. My contract is up at the end of December, 1st of January of this coming year. So December 2025, the contract ends. I put that, and we discussed it a couple of different meetings, I believe, last year. And council had actually asked me if I could move up the project and use 2024 one-time expense funds. But since I was under contract, we really wouldn't have gained anything. So I said, no, we're not really able to do that. So I put it there as a conversation topic, as you consider your one-time expenses this year. And we'll be starting that project here very soon and be able to have some definitive numbers for you. But that's a budgetary number at this point in time.
So you'll have that better number for that before we get finished with this budget cycle, or?
May not be completely done, but we might have a better idea.
Yeah, the work on that has been delayed because as part of this overall radio project, we need to understand how many channels we're actually going to record, which has an implication on the size of recorder that's
How many licenses I need.
And, I don't know, I can't talk. We'd had previous conversation about that being paid for out of our one-time in '25.
I'm curious, so it's been five years since I've been on the city side of council. Has their contribution increased in the last five or six years? How's their contribution to the funding of 911?
Sure, absolutely. That is based on the 911 interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Richmond. It's spelled out, it's about 65, 70% of our employees. It's spelled out, it's about 65, 70% of our employees is what is covered by that interlocal agreement. So the employees that are paid out of the 911 fund, it does not apply to only the General Fund. And so that accounts for about 11 or 12 of our employees. And the City of Richmond is invoiced every month by the county for the actual expenses of personnel, and only personnel. Has nothing to do with equipment, maintenance agreements, anything, just strictly personnel, including holiday pay and overtime. So I'm not going to have that number off the top of my head, but I want to say it was like $430,000 last year that was received from the City of Richmond. And it just varies every year. And how they come up with the numbers, we give them the past five years of historical data of what they've paid, and they budget accordingly. You're welcome.
We also had meetings, Matthew and Jeff and I, when I was on city council, we were together to have better communication.
I actually started those emails just the other day. So we'll be sitting down with the city the end of July to go over some projections for next year to help them and assist them with their budgeting process.
Appreciate you doing it.
Absolutely.
Matt, as finance chairman, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't think so. I think we're just going to have to look at everything overall. We tried, we just couldn't do it.
I understand.
I'm sure before we finish, there'll be additional questions.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I just appreciate you letting me come early, since I was unable to on the 16th.
Part of this is fair and it's not bad.
I'll take that.
Sheriff Ritter.
For the sheriff, I just checked that you didn't correct my advice.
He was right the first time.
He was correct, even though I couldn't remember.
So we just it?
We recommend from a...
We recommend a thing?
They appoint.
They appoint, and yours is a member of the public, that's general public, that's your only criteria.
And it's the same way with the mayor's appointment. The mayor recommends...
His criteria is different.
It's, the criteria is different, but the recommendation.
Political balance has to be there, but that was, that's not an issue of competition or discussion.
Ron, did you have to tell him he was right?
Pardon?
Did you have to say he was right?
No, he said he was right.
No, I said he was right.
I appointed him.
He was right saying that I had been right before, but not him. I was going to say that the rag was right, too.
I knew I was right the whole time.
There's only one thing about it. If it doesn't work out, there's no turning the blame, see?
Two shoulders, Gary. Very wide, very drawn.
Sorry, Sheriff.
Sheriff?
Right or wrong, I appreciate that you've seen me today instead of the 16th. I won't be able to be here that, that day. And again, I'm, like Matthew, I'm grateful that you changed your schedule to allow for me to present today. So I've got good news, good news and bad at the same time. I only have two funds, two funds that I'm actually asking for increases on, and one other one that I do want to bring to your attention.
Do we have, does anybody else have printed copies? Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I've not been able to get you printed copies, and I do apologize. Those will be coming out this week.
I just didn't know if I just didn't have it in front of me.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. But I will get those out to you this week. The first one is in the jail fund, or jail line, I'm sorry, jail budget. It's under pro-contractual. And as you're well aware, with the new, or upcoming contract with quality correctional care, their increase for their services has went up a substantial amount. In fact, an increase of $138,000 for 2026. Last year, we allocated $865,000 for quality correctional care services, and 2026 charges will be $1,3,640.09 to the best of my calculation. There are, with that in mind, with an increase of $138,000, there are a couple of other items that we pay for out of pro-contractual that we've been able to save some money on. There's been some decreases in some of the expenses from some of these contracts that we utilize routinely throughout the year. So we've actually only asked for a total increase in the pro-contractual under the jail budget of $132,000. And again, this is less than the actual increase for QCC services, but that's by virtue of savings that we've managed on some of the other items that, that we utilize. The second increase that I want to bring to your attention is on the enforcement budget, and that is the pension contributions, which I'm certain that council is already aware of. In fact, we had some previous discussion with President Smith about that just last week. The actual increase on that is $126,337. In 2025, the allocation was $536,870. In 2026, the recommended county contribution via the documents from One America was $663,207. The statutory minimum is $640,902. Again, my request on that is an increase of $126,337 in order to keep the Sheriff's Merit Pension Fund solvent. Last item that I have is just to bring to your attention, and an increase was not requested in the budget in light of the potential for the reduced income due to the Senate Bill 1, is for mobile data terminals. We had asked for the same amount of money, which was $68,000, same amount as we had asked for last year. However, we are experiencing routine failures in the mobile data terminals in our vehicles just simply because of their age. We have managed to, in the last year, get by by purchasing refurbished units. But we understand that that's not always going to be a possibility. Our anticipated need and my recommendation would be to be able to go through a Panasonic contract to give us ruggedized and purpose-built mobile data terminals for the patrol cars, which would be much more sturdy. They're, they're made exactly for that job. And that would be an annual contract under a five-year agreement of $45,000 per year. This would increase that line item by $30,000. Now, again, I'm only bringing this to your attention. We intentionally omitted that request in light of the other increases that unfortunately we've had. But if there are other funding sources available, I would be willing to pursue those. Or if we do happen to find it within the budget for 2026, that would be something that I would like to request. It is a definite need.
So are you going to provide us some documentation or narrative on some of these things you've been talking about?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll have that to you this week.
Questions of Randy?
I don't know what the problem is here, Randy.
No questions.
So I know, I think it was my second meeting where you came in and we talked about the quality correctional care services and more to us of the increase. Can you remind me again why it's such a drastic increase?
And I think Ron could probably speak to this as well. We had entered into a three-year contract with quality correctional care, and that has We, doing our due diligence, I decided to not auto-renew their contract and put it out for bids to see if there was maybe a more, another service out there that could do, you know, the services needed for our inmates at either lesser cost or at least have a better program for the same cost. And I found out that it was just not the case. Unfortunately, the next closest bid was over $1 million for, to begin, quality correctional care for the remainder of this year. In the beginning of next was $993,000 a year. So it was significantly less. They are actually providing more personnel under their plan than the next closest bidder was for a higher price. So they are, they are truly less expensive in providing a good service, and they maintained our accreditation through our medical services, which is extremely important, as the commissioners heard this morning, through our liability carrier, our jail is our highest liability, you know, for the county. And making sure that we have proper care for our inmates helps reduce that. So it's a long-winded explanation.
I think it's fair to say that they front-end loaded this contract renewal. I think...
I agree.
The year-to-year increase from our prior year to our first year, the new is about a 16% increase. We heard this morning that, and if you, you know, what indices you look at, we're looking at nine to 10, the average is increase in medical, medical inflation. We have, however, two more years with them after that first year where the increase is 4% per year. So that's obviously what they did. I don't, we don't know their own personal, I mean, the company's finances, but it's pretty accurate that they felt like they'd maybe left some money on the table for the last couple of years.
Yeah, and, yeah, for what it's worth, the owner of the company did tell me that she has actually lost money in Wayne County over the last couple of years because of the lower increases annually, so.
We have one year where we could elect to continue for a second year without any increase.
That's correct.
Same, same conditions, so that's kind of under, I don't think we're going to see it again.
So Sheriff, in my notes from prior council meetings, I, we had said that you needed extra for the first four months of 2026, and then the increase takes effect for the rest of the eight months because our contract's till April, right? Doesn't this contract end go from April to April?
May to April.
Yeah, it goes from May to April.
May to April. So what, we had said that you would need extra for the first four months of 2026, and then the increase for the other eight months is that, this amount is for all that?
No, the, the increase actually starts now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's actually retroactive to, I think she gave us an extension through May.
I mean, I think the understanding is the effective date of the new contract is May 1.
Yeah.
We, until we got the contract, but we're still working on modifications.
So in 2026's budget, we'll still be on the amount we're paying right now for the first four months of the year, right?
Correct. Yeah, that, that is correct, so.
And but then we'll need extra, whatever, they're going to raise it again next year, right?
But that's, that was calculated in, in my request, yeah.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Where we do need the money and where I will fall short is in 2025.
You'll have to come back.
I'll have to come back for additional funding there.
Okay. Pass the plate then.
Other questions for Randy? We'll look forward to receiving the narrative documentation to go along with this.
Yep, I'll have it to you all this week.
And I'm sure we'll have additional questions before this process ends.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hickelbahn.
Okay, looking at your bi-weekly project sheet, the annex generator that is hopefully coming to a close, the training that was set aside in the contract will take place this Friday. That could be a two-hour session put on by the generator manufacturer, and then the commissioners will discuss next week about the criteria to bring this to a substantial completion so that we can close this project out. The Fairgrounds Parking Lot, Brandon and the surveyor has gone back out there to shoot some other elevations and some drainage issues, and they've indicated that they should have that report to the commissioners next week so that we can start developing some costs anticipated for that project as well. Recall that the maintenance building, security fence, we've taken those quotes under advisement because we're looking at a bigger scope project, and that is the security entrance on the west side of the courthouse where the sheriff department brings in the prisoners to that entrance, including some security screening for that area as well, so that it's a little safer for the officers to bring those prisoners in and out of that area, as well as screening and protecting our cooling tower that we have there for the air conditioning system for the courthouse. It does have some vulnerable mechanical devices that are easily accessible for tampering. A new project that is now on the list for the commissioners to start looking at, and that's the west parking lot. Normally, you would call that the health lot where WellCare is located. Just to give you a little background, we currently have a situation where all the lights in the center of that parking lot are out. When this parking lot was built, it was built the same time the jail was. And so the electric to serve this parking lot comes from the jail. It doesn't come from the WellCare building, the health building, because it wasn't there at the time. So this goes under the roads, it's underground cabling to serve these lights. These lights are also high voltage, they're 440 volts. Because of the size of the parking lot, you can have a higher wattage bulb with that much voltage, but you can have less amperage draw. So that's why you can get by with a little smaller wiring. What we've had over the period of years, though, we've had three electrical breaks underground, and we've had an internet cabling break underground. It's all under underground conduit. I suspect it's because of the, the fill that this was built on and shifting. So with the last time that we had the underground electric break, we went down from three-phase to single-phase. So now the lights are, are wired in a daisy chain, if you will, rather than a separate line to each side. So now we have a break somewhere in that daisy chain. So we think it's going to be more cost-effective to put that line overhead. And remember that we've added some devices to the coroner's trucks that need to be plugged in all the time. So we can't do 110-volt plug-in with high voltage from that line. So we'll have to have a pedestal with a step-down transformer on that side of the street. So we're gathering cost estimates for that. We'll certainly bring those back to you when we get more information, but that's a long story for a explanation. The courthouse front entrance, they've got the walls and planter poured, they'll start pouring the steps. Probably won't happen this week with the strip. We got about an inch of rain with this last storm that's come through. So they have sent me a, an anticipated finishing of this side of the street, anticipate have this finished the third week in July, and then they'll move to the east side of the street. The proxy card lock system, again, that's still on schedule. The commissioners did approve the final draft of the proxy card policy today, and I probably will be talking to you folks then at your July meeting because you'll need to be issued proxy cards and how those will be programmed. And then the courthouse elevator project, the commissioner will be meeting with the architect- architect next Wednesday to start rilling down the details of these bid specs. And as always, your council one-time fund balance as of yesterday is in the lower right-hand corner, and remember that you've got 379,000 committed to that for police vehicles, and commissioners will receive those bids next Wednesday. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How about that? That's a number of things that, if you want additional information, I've got hands and outs for most of this, but we know to hear a few questions. First thing is to announce that the town of Milton, one of the, one of the towns that participated in the help program, is completing their, their new playground park that was part of that program. They're having a dedication on July 19th, that's a Saturday at 10:00 a.m. in Milton. It's, it's, they're calling it the Old School Community Park, so it's on the site of the old Milton School. To join us there. The next thing, today was kind of an insurance day, so we had, we had folks in from, from our medical insurance provider, Dunn and Associates, Kathy Dunn was here. We spoke to Kathy today about, about some potential changes to the plan that might save a little bit of money. Commissioners are reviewing that and will make decisions shortly, but we, we feel like we do not require, and our budget does not reflect, an increase recommendation for, for the county's portion of the medical insurance program. You're starting to get now the, the weekly report. It will become routine, and you'll probably wish in a few weeks that you weren't getting all these emails about, about where we're at in, in the funding for health insurance, but you have that, and we'll get it on a weekly basis. We also spoke to our casualty insurance carriers, Lyons and Andy Brown from, from, what's the name of his firm?
Gravie.
Gravie and Appel were in, and there is good news there. We put in our budget a 10% increase in anticipation of what the premiums would, would need to go up to, to sustain that program in substantially the same form. We got the actual number today, it's 5.49% as an increase, so it's very significant, and a big part of that is, is due to the sheriff's department and all of the activity that goes into reducing liability exposure in the jail. A lot of cities and counties in Indiana and the Midwest and across the country are having trouble even getting liability insurance for their jails, and we're told that we're in very good shape, again, based largely on what the sheriff and previous sheriffs-
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
For us to be accredited and to, I mean, you heard, you heard the cost of the medical provider, but that reduces exposure on liability by making sure that the, the folks in the jail are, are well taken care of from a medical perspective, so. To everybody that's been involved in that.
So that increase takes effect?
It actually takes effect July 1. And, and remember that both the medical insurance and the liability insurance have a renewal July 1.
But you were gonna change your budget next year to CLUE?
That's, that's what we're anticipating, okay? So now that we have a number, we can go back and rework it.
Okay.
And again, kind of like you were talking about with the, the medical for the sheriff, it's not on a calendar year basis, so we need to make sure that we're allocating enough money to cover the increases.
Every year because of that, so.
Exactly. We, we had a discussion last week with folks from Whitewater Valley Regional Transit for many years, probably close to 20 years now, we've had a relationship with them. They have come to us and explained where we're at, and I'll, I'll send this information to you. They're asking again for $10,000, which is match money for a federal grant. They are improving in their ridership, due largely to their being able to be recognized by Medicare and private insurance carriers to be reimbursable for that cost of transport if you need a ride to the doctor's office, or in some cases, they say they're now taking people to Indianapolis if they have an appointment with a specialist in Indianapolis. Again, the ridership is going up, their revenue is going up because of that reimbursement from insurance companies, so we'll send that out to you, but the request is still the $10,000 match for the federal grant. Absolutely. Absolutely. We have discussed a time or two an issue with Help the Animals. They are requesting some funding to do some renovation of their facility, particularly in this case, the outside kennels, both from the, the concrete work as well as the fencing and then some upgrades to electrical. We have had a contract with them now, this is the second year. I think from all indications, it's been very helpful for us, it's been a step, a significant step forward in what we're able to do for the, the animal control officer and the sheriff's department as they need to deal with issues of, of animals that are loose and causing problems. So that issue, we think, is something that we should, we should try to help them with primarily. Again, because of that relationship, we need, we need to make sure that they have space for animals that we need to take them, but there's a broader picture of what they can do for the entire Wayne County community, so. We have talked in the past, we feel like the commissioners can, can come up with funds from already budgeted line items, and primarily from our animal welfare line item, but also some additional funding from the contingency fund that you gave us for 2025. So we think we can, we can cover this cost of, the total cost of the project would be $47,700. Working with the Wayne County Foundation for them to take on a part of that, we've had some positive discussions, we don't have final numbers yet, but we think between what, what they would be able to provide and what we have available in those line items that we talked about, that we can fund this project and keep the Help Shelter operating smoothly, being able to fulfill our contract, so. Guys, any additional comments you want to make?
No, I just, talking with our animal control officer and also with the Help Shelter director, I mean, they work great together, it's worked out really well. I'm pleased that we finally cut this, that we have a place to send them, and we want to nurture that relationship, and I think this will go a long way for building that relationship in the future, so. God forbid if our animal control officer has to seize 20 animals, they'll take them, they'll, they'll work with her, so, and that's, that's beneficial to have that relationship because before that, we didn't, it was like-
My understanding is that they actually will send people out-
They help.
And help Jesse with picking those animals up, so. Aaron, anything?
They definitely go above and beyond what, what our agreement is with them, which I appreciate, so, but we're a good partnership.
So with the number of animals, are, how are we, are we on track to-
Yeah, I sent, I can send you a report, I got one yesterday from the sheriff's department, I'll forward that to, for you, and you can send it to everybody. What was that number, I can, will you just tell them off the top of my head here, please, if I can find the email?
I don't remember, but we're on track to, to be able to fulfill the contract if there is no significant, you know, huge increase in the number of animals that are, that are taken.
Yeah, 179 for the year.
For-
She gave us numbers for this year, too.
Cats and dogs. And, and reimburse them at a different rate for cats and dogs.
Eighty-year date.
So we're pretty much on track with last year, maybe a little bit higher than, than last year, but not, not dramatically, and we think with the existing budget, we can, we can both fulfill our contract obligation as well as help them with this project.
I sent that to you next.
Okay. Okay, and the last item here is, I do have some handouts here that we got from WCTV. Never mind, I killed a, a branch of a tree unnecessarily, my bad. So this is what we have. This is, still, I think, will need to be refined a little bit in terms of both potentially the number of meetings that WCTV would cover for us, as well as the length of those meetings. Still have three and a half years on my term, and I'm sure that adds significantly to the length of the meetings.
I'm sure.
If it's a project and-
Have you ever given any thought to commissioners not meeting weekly and only meeting like twice a month?
Yeah.
No.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
I second that.
So Max, did y'all meet when you were commissioner, did y'all meet when you-
Council used to not meet till budget time, didn't they?
That was in the distant past, we kept records on stone tablets.
Yeah.
For a long time, but it was probably in the seven, early eighties, late seventies that the council started meeting. The philosophy at the time was, we got a budget, it was approved, you don't need any changes till July, and that's the way they- Unfortunately, that doesn't work today. But yes, commissioners met weekly, but the council was just once a month. Once in a great while, they'd have a workshop or a special meeting, but basically the council would have that once a month.
At any rate, before I brought that up, we were talking about this proposal, the, suggestion here, and we, we don't yet have a contract, I spoke to Eric a little bit prior to the meeting, that our intent would be to have a contract. The recommendation from the commissioners is that we, we do this on a six-month trial basis, that July 1 to December 31st of this year, we'll be able to determine whether there need to be any adjustments made. The, the estimate here, based on, again, the, the number of meetings that need to be covered statutorily, would be $59,250. Of that, and, and so for six months instead of a year, it would be just under, just under $30,000. We still have $12,500 in our line item of support for WCTV for this year. I'm told that this contract would replace that commitment of $25,000 for 2025, so there's $12,500 that could apply to the $30,000, which would leave, what, $17,500 that, that the council would need to provide to, to make this work, so. Again, that's the recommendation from the commissioners, any-
Yeah, I don't know if you heard the conversation before the meeting started this morning, this commissioners' meeting was livestreamed. Barry watched it and said it was pretty good, so they're already up and running and from day one can start live streaming.
I thought you were just talking about the content and the erudite speaking of the commissioners.
I couldn't say that, I'm telling you.
No, okay.
I, I'll say that, you know, when, when we look at the cost of WCTV, and then, and then I know Craig's here in the room, the, the extra work that's gonna be placed on his department through IT, you know, I, I look at it that I believe WCTV can, can do the job a little more efficiently, and I, I think Craig, I don't know if you would agree with me on that, but with their expertise, with, within that field, I think, I think they can do it a little bit more efficient and have it taken care of, and have the documentation that needs to be done on the programming that's required by the law, and financially and everything else, I think that WCTV is just, that's my opinion, that I believe that's just the best way we should go.
And the transparency.
Yeah, and having a third, somebody outside of the county.
I'm glad to hear that, because I personally feel that that's very important right now.
Yes.
And if we have a third party doing it, that way it negates someone trying to say that, oh, well, our IT department just happened not to record or something.
Oh, we have technical errors.
Exactly, that puts our IT department in a very bad position, and I don't want to see that happen, so I'm glad to hear the commissioners have decided to support WCTV and go the direction in which we're going.
I guess, I, I would have a question that Barry, even though he's behind the camera.
He can't answer you now.
He can't answer me?
No, he's, he's right on the camera.
Jeff has mentioned the possibility of a six-month engagement, but when I read this, it said that you were gonna have to purchase some equipment to provide the live streaming. Would WCTV entertain a six-month engagement instead of a longer term?
I'll let our board treasurer respond.
I don't, I actually can't, for the first time, I can't say, I don't know that answer. So you're asking if, because of the equipment we need to purchase, would we prefer beyond a six-month?
Correct.
And I think the reason that we, so I'm going, I'm answering this based on a conversation I had with the board president, which is Ken Paus. So based on that conversation, it was, it was, we felt it would be best for the county if we did the six-month, see the hours, see how it worked, and then it would give a chance for the commissioners to revisit where we really are and be a little bit more responsible about the contract.
And to answer that a little bit further, Barry, with that six months, there's some other things in place that we're requesting from the board to do, business plan and all these other things in conjunction with the city, so that we'll make sure that they have all their ducks in row and can show us that they will be successful in the future, so that's where the six months come in.
In the, in the meantime, the IT department has tested the equipment that we have, they are prepared to, to provide that service if that becomes necessary for any reason. They don't anticipate that it would, but, but they are up to speed on what needs to be done and how to do it.
Which brings me to a question. For you, Craig, does your staff have the availability, the bandwidth to assume the hours in the calendar year, or would you be asking for additional personnel?
That's hard to say. We're, we're about, we kind of estimated it at about an hour and a half to two hours per, per meeting, for us to, for us to do it with a whole lot of processing time. But I, I would assume that number would go down. I wouldn't think that this would put that much of a burden on someone, but, you know, this is new, you know, so I, I really don't have a, a good answer for that.
Thank you.
Jeff, is this proposal a cost not to exceed, or is it still gonna be by the hour regardless of how many hours it's been?
You know, that would be up to the council.
I would guess it's an hourly, I mean, because we can't control-
It's an hourly request, so.
We can't say, we shut it off, it's already stopped the cameras now because we ran out of money.
And, and again, the way I understand it, they're asking for $250 an hour, which includes a half an hour of travel time, setup time for each meeting, so if it's a two-hour meeting, two and a half hours. And whether, whether this is a close estimate or we're off by a mile, I, I can't tell you, so.
Well, we do have, and there are agreements that-
Well, we do have, and there are agreements that have an estimate, but not to exceed.
And and I think you could do that, and we can we can revisit it if we need to. If you don't want to exceed that number, it would mean that we'd have to have IT do some or all of the.
No, when I say not to exceed.
Come back to you and ask for more money.
No. Normally, a contract that is a not to exceed number, they still provide all the service.
You mean their agreement would be, we will not exceed this and we'll do whatever whatever meetings we've committed to.
On a not to exceed, if they put in 10 extra hours, that would be on their.
They.
Yeah. I'm not saying that's what it ought to be. I'm asking if that's.
I'm pretty sure.
Contracts at this point, so it's not the case at this point.
I know there's no contract, but at some point, you're going to get a contract.
Correct. And hopefully in the next two weeks.
Something wrong can sure work out with their their attorney.
Working with the treasurer and the director and others.
Max, if I could put my two cents worth in, please, thank you, Jeff, because I know he's going to have something to say probably. He usually does. He usually does. I just want to support WCTV because I echo exactly what Jeff Caput just said. I absolutely love our IT department. I worked as treasurer. I've been around here for 20 years. They're fabulous. But I think when you're trying to take them and put them over doing something they've not done before, not that they couldn't do it. Craig, I appreciate you immensely. I call him all the time for stuff. So they're great, and I'm not saying that at all. But but also the added burden and when they need to be in all these other places, and now they've got something in here going on. You know, who's who's not going to get what they need when they've got a Zoom call or something that's not working? So I just wanted to say that because I really appreciate Eric Marsh and all the people from WCTV. I think they've done a wonderful job all the years I've been around anyway, and I appreciate them. So thank you.
I think we're going to have to just wear wear the county council hat. I mean, from, we don't know what this all looks like. I mean, it's all new to everybody. And so I think we're just going to have to move into it knowing that some give and take and figure out, you know, there's the franchise fees that are coming in that credits this to me. I mean, that covers this, as Jeff mentioned a while ago. So I, but again, I think we're just going to have to be open-minded and then we, after six months, review it and decide what other tactics we need to take.
And going into it with a six-month period here is is a good, because it's new to everybody, including WCTV.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And they may come back and say, man, we really didn't anticipate that it was going to be this, and we need to change.
And we really can't pinpoint exactly how many hours. There's just no way.
Right. But I think we're very fortunate in the position we are because we have two people who are very good at what they do.
Yes.
And they can help give us the information we need so we can make the decision.
And the other element, again, as some have mentioned, is supporting the broader mission of WCTV. And if this does that, then I think that's that's very helpful to the community at large.
Yes.
So what do you think about the number and coming up with $17,500 additional? Is that something you support to to move forward with a a six-month trial?
Since it's a requirement of the law, we have to do that, and what I'm hearing is is broad support for WCTV.
All right, so we will move forward with a contract that we hope to get in place before July 1. But again, if there's if if there's a problem with that, we'll work with WCTV to make sure and and with our IT department, if need be, to make sure that we are meeting the letter of the law starting July 1 and and keep working towards a contract.
Six weeks, the six months might be over.
We don't have a contract before before six months.
Don't say that, Mr. Jeff.
With the money you still have in your budget, you'll be able to.
We can we can pay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Until until you decide where that number is and you can provide.
I think we agreed to increase the franchise fee to the 100%, didn't we? Didn't we vote on that?
Yes, we did. But the franchise fee is lowering every year.
Right, but we agreed to go ahead and.
Yeah, we did that a couple of weeks ago, didn't we?
I thought we increased.
I thought we did.
I thought we voted to agree.
We did have to look at it.
So there may be more there.
But this takes precedent over that.
Yes, correct.
That's.
It's going to be.
I mean, again, at the moment, the franchise fees go into the general fund as miscellaneous revenue. There's nothing from the franchise fees that are specific earmarked for this. So there there will be roughly $32,000 in franchise fees we anticipate being collected in 2025. So to that extent, that money is available in the general fund, which you can construe as your line item for in in one of your, one of your line items in your budget that could be moved and used for this contract.
So I think to help control that, we're going to ask Mr. Higginbotham to put a red timer clock up there. And when your time's up, I would support that. Ding, ding, ding.
And I get the gavel then, right?
Well, Jeff said, Jeff and I talked on Sunday. He's like, Mr. Jeff, I don't want to have to, you know, end a meeting at two hours when we still have 34 minutes of business. Well, that makes sense.
We need to take care of business. We need to take care of business.
That's what you said. I get it. I get it. Sweet talking.
That look on your face, that's what I'm saying.
No, and well, see, I don't want the owls on me yet, so I don't know if it's showing the look on my face.
It is. All right, that's all I have.
Do you have a few commissioners have anything to add on any other subjects that has been?
I'm not touching any of that with a tinsel nail. I I think we've wore it out tonight.
No.
Thank you.
Mark, I understand that you might have a few comments you wanted to make on upcoming, whether it changes. You can keep those brief.
We're out of time.
I will remind you, it's a state where the council is called a meeting, but four of us will be attending Saturday in Indianapolis that will be talking about this very subject and the impact of Senate Bill 1. So we'll be discussing in the near future consequences of what we learned from that meeting.
My office is responsible for a lot of this implementation of this new law. The information I gave into you here, I'm sure that you've heard it over and over and over. I hope it's new information on here. The the $1,004,000 that the state has come up with is the amount of money that the county was going to use. They got that figure by taking the homestead exemptions that were in Wayne County, 18,000 of them, times a credit of $300, which the bill calls for for homestead, making a million four. The one of the major changes in this, the way this will be handled, it goes from exemptions to credits. And there's a difference between an exemption and a credit. The the credit is money, the exemption is is a reduction in assessed value. On the homestead, the homestead exemption is going to be phased out so that the the credit will replace that theoretically. The general fund, for example, on the on this, the figures that we've been given, the county $1,004,000 is divided among the general, Cune Bridge, Cune Courthouse, and Capital Development. With, as I show here, the general fund, $1,260,000, Cune Bridge, $70,000 difference, theoretically a reduction in revenue, and so on. The amount in what the taxpayer can look at, in my estimation, on property tax reduction is $250,000. So that if there, if people are looking for a big reduction in property taxes, I don't see it. Now, $250,000 reduction is an estimate. Along in this bill are several options that county council has involving tax increases, as you're aware. The question then becomes with the taxpayer, is that $250,000 eaten up someplace else? This is, this change and putting on the council responsibilities to raise taxes, in my, this is just smoke and mirrors. And the benefit to the taxpayer is only going to be when they get the bill to pay this. They don't care how you get there. They don't care about how the exemptions, all of those things. There are several exemptions that are going to be done away with. There are changes in exemptions, income limit changes that we're going to have to implement. One of the issues became, I'm given the choice of rebilling for estimates, requiring taxpayers to come in and file again for for an exemption. And I'm not doing that. We're not going to run them around in that way. We're going to continue with the exemptions as they are now, and we will carry them forward so they don't have to come in and refile. If you have not received, Max, a homestead exemption, and you want to file it, then you're going to have to come to my office and file it. Some people, there are a lot of people that have not filed this exemption for various reasons. They need to file it. It's about a 40% reduction in your property tax on that homestead. And as they phase it out, you're going to lose that 40%. The question is whether it's going to be offset with a credit. As it stands, well, I can see on this thing, and we won't know until next year when people start getting their tax statements, and then they come in and, well, why are my taxes higher this year than they were last year? So on. The real culprit in all of this, in my opinion, is the assessed value of your property. Taxes are based on what government spends, and if you don't cut what you spend, you're not going to cut a tax. Even if you did that, the assessed value of this county has gone up. For example, how many of you people, you all got a reassessment recently? Anybody pay assessment go down? Probably not. So as that assessment goes up.
But market values definitely not.
Yes, but the assessment is not based on market value. One of the things that the, in reading the Western Wayne newspaper, one of the things the assessor said, on that assessment, would you take that as a price if you sold your house? And you would say, no, that's too low. That is not the issue. The issue is that assessment in relation to all the other assessments, having nothing to do with the value of your house and what you would take for it.
It's generally less. Assess value is generally less than market value.
Sure. And it it's an easy way for not just this assessor, but all assessors to to justify the increase in assessments, because they can say to you, would you take that on your, as a payment on your house? And you're going to say, no. So you feel comfortable with that assessment. So it is, the whole basis of this is until they get the assessments of your home under control in some manner, tax rates will generate more money because of the increases in assessments than it was last year, for example. So I'm talking as much to taxpayers as I am here.
I know you are.
So it it is, I don't see the 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 $1,004 reduction in in county's budget. But anyway.
You don't, you don't see it saying that it's not going to happen or that we don't need to do it?
I can't answer that. That's, I'm, that's, that's not my job.
Well, but you, but I'm, you are, I mean, you are saying I can't see it. So what I'm just asking on clarification is that you can't see it being, the cuts not coming from from the reduction of property taxes, or you can't see us that we need to cut the budget?
If, where I sit now, if all of these deductions, there are changes in them. Some they go do away with, some they change from a deduction to a a credit. As long as the assessed value goes up, even after the credits and all of this are given, then I don't see a reduction in income to any governmental unit, not just, not just county.
Interesting.
The, in talking to various people.
I don't think you are, but I hope you are.
Pardon?
And so we hope you're right.
I think, I think the increase in assessed value is offset obviously by change in the in the tax rate. And so it's, it's, it's balanced. It can only, the levy can only increase by a certain amount. That doesn't mean that my taxes are only going to increase by that amount. And in in my case, where I'm I'm doing a rumination, it's going to go up. I know that. But I I think the change that you're talking about in changing from a a credit, changing to a credit instead of a deduction, is going to definitely impact us. And whether it's a million or a million four or a million two, I'm not sure anybody knows positively. But there will be a reduction.
Can can I say one thing that I want to, this is a question, make sure I clarify. So if it's a deduction, for our people that are watching, if it's a deduction, that can be a shift in taxes to another tax group.
Exactly.
If it's a credit, we just, county just loses it.
Correct. If that, in fact.
That's what I was asking him. But thank you, Jeff.
If the deduction, in talking about the homestead.
Yep.
The thing, what what this is doing, it reduces the homestead credit, I'm sorry, deduction, at the same time leading to credit. And I don't see where the deduction in the homestead exemption, I don't see where that $300 is going to meet what the taxpayers' reduced amount is in the in the homestead. I don't think it's it's going to keep up with it. The homestead exemption is almost 40%, a little over 40% reduction in your property tax. If the, I don't see that $300. For example, if your taxes are $2,500 and we're looking at 10%, you're going to get a $250 reduction in your property tax. You're going to get a $300 credit. So I don't see where that credit is going to be equal to or greater than the decrease in the deduction from the from the homestead. I don't know if I'm expressing it right, but it's, you're you're reducing on one side the the amount of your assessed value, and then on the other side, they're giving you a credit. the, the amount of your assessed value and then on the other side, they're giving you a credit. The question is in my mind, does that credit equal to the amount of the deduction being reduced?
Well, we've got a lot to learn.
Yes.
And we are going to solve it tonight.
There's a lot of unknowns out there. So everybody needs to stay tuned. And they'll, they'll get a lot of information over the next year. But as of today, not even the state can answer a lot of the questions that we've got. In fact, DLGF has said they're not even addressing some of these changes yet. Because it's too early in the process.
The true test will be next year around me when the tax payments are due and people have, will sit down and write a check on this. And they will be able to determine for themselves, is this a reduction in my taxes? Or is it any increase in my taxes? And that's up to them at that period.
And we really can't say on an individual basis anyway, that what everybody's individual taxes is going to do. There's just so much unknown right now.
I'd be interested in finding out next Saturday, when you come back from that meeting, if, uh, what I'm saying is, what you, is correct or not.
We will let you know.
I know, I know we want to wrap this up, but a quick question. Did, um, did we determine that we're going to try to have the chamber pull taxing entities together?
We did.
Okay.
And we are aiming towards the end of July for a meeting. I've talked to Melissa Vance. I've talked to Dave Bodorf at AIC. He's going to work with AIM to get somebody here from the Cities and Towns Association. We're contemplating inviting somebody from the chamber, maybe somebody from the FERO. So we're going to invite all elected officials, including school boards.
That's wonderful.
And so we're putting together a list. And, uh, we're going to look at some dates at, at Coolman to make sure that we have room for anybody who wants to attend. And we will provide that information. Again, at the end of July, it may or may not be all the information that there still is.
With budgeting starting for everybody.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and it will give them as much information as is currently available.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you technically on this. We've talked about this over the last two to three weeks. And we, we are planning to get something together that will be of a benefit to all the taxing in Wayne County, whether it's schools, libraries, whatever, township, trustees, the whole gamut. And I would hope that many of those entities would participate in the meeting that we do have.
Just a reminder, there's a sign-up sheet going around that Misty needs back for the library project.
The library project.
It's right here in my, trying to get on my calendar.
I just want to duly note that on the WCTV sheet here, we were supposed to be at two hours and I think we're going to make it.
Are you calling for a motion?
I don't think so because half an hour of that is travel time and setup.
No, that's a part of the conference.
Drive fast on the way home.
Exactly. So.
Yeah. We did it.
Instead of two hours, we're two and a half hours.
Just cut your meeting. That's what you're shorting, commissioners.
I'll look up. We'll do that. Or we'll cancel several.
Cancel it. Do you need a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Hold your favor, I. We are adjourned.